From you is burial place that you may bury your dead. Then Abraham stood up and bowed himself to the people of the land, the sons of earth. And he spoke with them, saying, if it is your wish that I bury my dead out of my sight, hear me and meet with Ephron, the son of Zohar, for me, that he may give me the cave of Magpela, which he has, which is at the end of his field. Let him give it to me at the full price as property for a burial place among you. Now Ephron dwelt among the sons of earth. And Ephron the Hittite answered Abraham in the presence of the No, my lord, hear me. I'll give you the field and the cave that is in it. I'll give it to you in the presence of the sons of my people. I'll give it to you, bury your dead. Then Abraham bowed himself before the people of the land. And he said to Ephron at the hearing of the people of the land, saying, if you will give it to me, hear me. I will give you money for the field. Take it from me and I will bury my dead there. And Ephron answered Abra- Abraham, saying to him, my lord, listen to me. The land is worth four hundred shekels of silver. What is that between me and you? You bury, so bury your dead. And Abraham listened to Ephron. And Abraham weighed out the silver for Ephron that he had named in the hearing of the sons of earth, four hundred shekels of silver, currency of the merchants. So the field of Ephron, which was in Magpela, which was before Mamre, the field and the cave which was in it, and all the trees that were in the field, which were within all the surrounding borders, were deeded to Abraham as a possession in the presence of the sons of earth before all who went in at the gate of his city. And after these, Abraham buried Sarah, his wife, in the cave of the field of Magpela between Mamre, that is Hebron, in the land of Canaan. So the field and the cave, that is in it, were deeded to Abraham by the sons of earth as property for a burial place. In this chapter, we read about the death of Sarah, Abraham's loving partner in life and his companion in his journey of faith. It had taken twenty-five years for the promise of God to give her and her husband the child of covenant Isaac. In spite of her human effort to hasten the fulfillment of the promise by offering her maid to her husband as wife, the Bible still commends her faith in Hebrews eleven eleven. Hebrews eleven eleven, it reads, by faith Sarah herself also received strength to conceive seed. And she bore a child when she was past the age because she judged him faithful, who had promised. Sarah died at the age of one hundred and twenty-seven years, and her husband mourned her death. Death is sure for everyone, and mourning is natural. But we believers are not to grieve as those who have no hope. First Thessalonians four thirteen to fourteen, First Thessalonians four thirteen to fourteen says, but I do not want you to be ignorance concerning those who have fallen asleep, lest you sorrow as others who have no hope. For if we believe that Jesus died and rose again, even so God will bring with him those who sleep in Jesus. We shall meet again. Sarah died in the land that God had promised to give Abraham and his descendants. And Abraham, Abraham was not going to take Sarah, his wife, back to his home country to be buried. So he needed a burial spot from the Hittites. This proves that he believed God's promises that the land of Canaan will eventually belong to him and his descendants. So he approached his neighbors with humility to purchase a burial plot from them. I am a foreigner and a visitor among you, he said. Give me property for a burial place among you, that I may bury my dead out of my sight. Up till now, although Abraham had been promised all the land of Canaan, in reality, he owned no land. Yes, he was rich in flocks and cattle, in silver and gold, in male servants and female servants, but he possessed no land. The Hittites extended great hospitality to Abraham and had great respect for him, and were willing to offer their tombs for free. But Abraham was not going to let his wife live in a borrowed tomb. He asked them to negotiate with Ephron on his behalf, so that he would send to him the cave of Magpela, which belonged to him. Even Ephron was ready to offer the cave for free, but Abraham insisted on paying for the cave. He paid four hundred shekels of silver to Ephron before all the people. And so Abraham became the possessor of the field of Ephron, which was in Magpela, the cave in it, and all the trees within the surrounding. All these became Abraham's first physical land possession in Canaan. So Abraham buried Sarah, his wife, in the cave of Magpela. This was where he would later be buried. It was also to be the burial place for Isaac, Jacob, and Joseph. Now we go on to chapter twenty-four, A Wife for Isaac. Chapter twenty-four, I'm going to read the first fourteen verses. Now Abraham was old, well advanced in age, and the Lord had blessed Abraham in all things. So Abraham said to the oldest of his house, who ruled over all he had, please put your hand under my thigh, and I will make you swear by the Lord, the God of heaven, the God of the earth, that you will not take a wife for my son from the daughters of the Canaanites, among whom I dwell. But you shall go to my country and to my family and take a wife for my son Isaac. And the servant said to him, perhaps the woman will not be willing to follow me to this land. Must I take your son back to the land from which you came? But Abraham said to him, beware, you do not take my son back there. The Lord God of heaven, who took me from my father's house and from the land of my family, and who spoke to me and swore to me, saying, to your descendants I give this land, he will send his angel before you, and you shall take a wife for my son from there. And if the woman is not willing to follow you, then you will be released from this oath. Only do not take my son back there. So the servant put his hand under the thigh of Abraham, his master, and swore to him concerning this matter. When the servant took, then the servant took ten of his master's camels and departed, for all his master's goods were in his hands. And he arose and went to Mesopotamia, the city of Nahor. And he made his camels kneel down outside the city by a well of water at evening time, the time when women go out to draw water. Then he said, O Lord God of my master Abraham, please give me success this day and show kindness to my master Abraham. Behold, here I stand by the well of water, and the daughters of the men of the city are coming out to draw water. Now let it be that the young woman, to whom I say, please let down your pitcher that I may drink, and she says, drink, and I will also give your camels a drink. Let I be the one you have appointed for your servant Isaac. And by this I will know that you have shown kindness to my master. In this chapter, we read a simple, straightforward story of how Abraham sent his servant to his home country and to his family to find a wife for his son Isaac. Here, we also have a vital principle emphasized, the importance of being led by God. God is interested in leading and guiding us, His children, in our decision-making process, provided we seek His face. Romans eight fourteen, Romans eight fourteen says, for as many as are led by the spirit of God, these are the sons of God. Jeremiah thirty-three, verse three, Jeremiah thirty-three, verse three says, call to me, and I will answer you and show you great and mighty things which you do not know. Psalm thirty-two, verse eight, Psalm thirty-two, verse eight says, and this is God speaking, I will instruct you and teach you in the way you should go. I will guide you with my eyes. And Psalm thirty-seven, verse five, Psalm thirty-seven, verse five says, commit your ways to the Lord, trust also in him, and he shall bring it to pass. Do we ask God for His leading and guidance? Or do we just go ahead and do things our own way? Some of us will remember times when we have followed our own ways and have suffered the consequences of our actions. God can be depended on to show us the way. Abraham wanted a wife for his son Isaac, but he was concerned about his son marrying one of the Canaanite daughters because he feared that he would be influenced by the pagan people, among whom he lived as they worshipped idols. Abraham knew that Isaac needed a wife to fulfill God's promises. This story shows us the prayerful and careful process by which God met this need. Abraham called his most trusted servant, whom many believe was Eliezer, whom he had once thought he would make his heir when the long-awaited promised son did not arrive. He gave him the task of finding Isaac a wife under a noth to the Lord. The instructions given to the servants were very clear. He was to go to Abraham's country and his family to find that wife. If the woman refused to follow him, he was not to take Isaac there. But he believed that God, who had promised to give him the land of Canaan and to whom him and his descendants would send an angel with him to make his mission successful. And if the woman was not willing to follow him, then he would be released from the oath. The servant took ten of his master's camels, loaded with gifts, and went to the city of Nahor, known as Haran, in Mesopotamia. He knelt down to pray to God, the God of Abraham, for the success of his mission. The servant knew how faithfully God had dealt with his master over the years, especially how he had answered Abraham's prayer by giving him the miracle sun in his old age. Now that he was in Haran, he needed God's guidance to find the right family and the right girl. He could not depend on his own wisdom to do this, but he believed that God, who had led him that far, would show him where to go and what to do. He sat at a well, as God had planned it. It was at the time of the day when women came to draw water. The servant trusted God and asked for a sign. He prayed that the young woman, who would not only offer him water to drink, but would also offer to draw water for his camels, would be the girl. God would be the girl that God had chosen for Isaac. Now let's read verses fifteen to thirty-one, fifteen to thirty-one. This is a very long passage, but we need to read all the details. Verse fifteen, and it happened before he had finished speaking. And behold, Rebecca, who was born to Bethel, son of Melchiah, the wife of Nebo, Abraham's brother, came out with her pitcher on her shoulder. Now the young woman was very beautiful to behold, a virgin, no man had known her. And she went down to the well, filled her pitcher, and came up. And the servant ran to meet her and said, please let me drink a little water from your pitcher. So she said, drink, my lord. Then she quickly let her pitcher down to her hand and gave him a drink. And when she had finished giving him a drink, she said, I will draw water for your camels also, until they have finished drinking. Then she quickly emptied her pitcher into the trough, ran back to the well to draw water, and drew for all his camels. And the man wondering at her remained silent, so as to know whether the Lord had made his journey prosperous or not. So it was when the camels had finished drinking that the man took a golden nose ring weighing half a shekel and two bracelets for her wrist weighing ten shekels of gold, and said, whose daughter are you? Tell me, please. Is there room in your father's house for us to lodge? And so she said to him, I am the daughter of Bethel, Melchiah's son, whom she bore to Nebo. Moreover, she said to him, we have both straw and feed enough and room to lodge. Then the man bowed down his head and worshipped the Lord. And he said, blessed be the Lord God of my master Abraham, who has not forsaken his mercy and truth towards my master. As for me, me on the way, the Lord led me to the house of my master's brethren. So the young woman ran and told her mother's household these things. Now Rebecca had a brother, whose name was Liban. And Liban ran out to meet the man, to the man, by the well. So it came to pass, when he saw the nose ring and the bracelet on his sister's wrist. And when he heard the words of his sister Rebecca, saying, thus the man spoke to me. Then he went to the man, and there he stood by the camels at the well. And he said, come in, all blessed of the Lord. Why do you stand outside? For I have prepared the house and a place for the camels. As it had, as God had planned it, this was the time when the young women came to get water. Before this man finished his prayer, Rebecca, the daughter of Bethel, the son of Nebo, Abraham's brother, came to the well. And just as the servant had prayed, indeed, God answered his prayer. The servant was sure it was God leading him to Rebecca and her family. How often have we seen God's hand at work, as the servant did? Once we commit our ways to the Lord, He indeed directs our paths. God had given the servant the confirming sign needed to recognize his guidance. Then the servant gave Rebecca gifts, a gold nose ring, and two gold bracelets for her wrist, in appreciation of her humble service to him. He then asked her whose daughter she was and whether there was room for him to lodge in her father's house. Rebecca told him she was the granddaughter of Nebo, Abraham's brother, and that he could lodge in their house. This was another confirmation that God had directed his steps. Psalm thirty-seven, verse twenty-three, Psalm thirty-seven, verse twenty-three says, the steps of a righteous man are ordered by the Lord, and it delights in his way. God had answered the servant's sincere prayer for guidance. All of us who are followers or crushed should expect God to faithfully guide us, as He did for Abraham's servant, as long as we depend on Him. The servant's response was one of praise and worship, as he celebrated God's faithfulness and guidance. Rebecca ran home to tell her people about her encounter with the servant. And Liban, her brother, went to offer Abraham's servant hospitality. They both went to the house together. What he would not eat until he had told them his mission and given them a detailed description of all that had transpired and everything about his master and his son Isaac. That story is a very long one, but we shall just read through from verse thirty-two, thirty-two, I'm going to read from thirty-two to forty-nine now. Then the man came to the house, and he uplodged the camels and provided straw and feed for the camels and water to wash his feet and the feet of the men who were with him. Food was set before him, but he said, I will not eat until I have told about my errand. And he said, speak on. So he said, I am Abraham's servant. The Lord has blessed my master greatly, and it has become great. He has given him flocks and herds, silver and gold, male and female servants, and camels and donkeys. And Sarah, my master's wife, bore a son to my master when she was old. And to him he has given all that he had. Now my master made me swear, saying, you shall not take a wife for, take a wife for my son from the daughters of the Canaanites, in whose land I dwell. But you shall go to my father's house and to my family and take a wife for my son. And I said to my master, perhaps the woman will not follow me. But he said to me, the Lord before whom I walk will send his angel with you and prosper your way, and you shall take a wife for my son from my family and from my father's house. You will declare from this oath when you arrive among my family. For if they will not give her to you, then you will be released from my oath. And this day I came to the well and said, O Lord God of my master Abraham, if you will now prosper the way in which I go, behold, I stand at the well of water, and it shall come to pass that when the virgin comes out to draw water, and I said to her, please give me a little water from your pitcher to drink. And she says to me, drink, and I will draw for your camels also. Let I be the woman whom the Lord has appointed for my master's son. But before I had finished speaking, in my heart, there was Rebecca coming out with her pitcher on her shoulder. And she went down to the well and drew water. And I said to her, please let me drink. And she made haste and let her pitcher down from her shoulder and said, drink, and I will give your camels a drink also. So I drank, and she gave the camels a drink also. Then I asked her and said, whose daughter are you? And she said, the daughter of Bethel, Nebo's son, whom Melchiah bore to him. So I put the nose ring on her nose and the bracelet on her wrist, and I bowed my head and worshipped the Lord and blessed the Lord God of my master Abraham, who had led me in the way of truth to take the daughter of my master's brother for his son. Now, if you will deal kindly and truly with my master, tell me. And if not, tell me that they may turn to the right hand or to the left. I think I just read on to fifty-three, verse fifty. Now Liban and Bethel answered and said, this thing comes from the Lord. We cannot speak to you either good or bad. Hear is Rebecca before you, take her and go, and let her be your master's son's wife, as the Lord has spoken. And it came to pass, when Abraham's servant heard their words, that he worshipped the Lord, bowed himself to the earth. Then the servant brought out jewels of silver, jewelry of gold, and clothing, and gave them to Rebecca. He also gave precious things to her mother and her brother. Put briefly, the servant gave this detailed description, I suppose, to assure this people, Rebecca's family, that he, she was going according to God, God's plan. She was going to where God was leading her. So having listened to this story, especially how God had guided him, Liban and Bethel said, this thing comes from the Lord. We cannot speak to you either good or bad. Hear is Rebecca before you, take her and go, and let her be your master's son's wife, as the Lord has spoken. God was in the relationship. Again, the servant worshipped. And according to their custom, he gave costly gifts of jewelry and clothes to Rebecca and to her family to confirm the marriage offer. I'm going to read the rest of the chapter. Fifty-four, from fifty-four to sixty-seven. And he and the men that were with him ate and drank and stayed all night. Then they arose in the morning, and he said, send me away to my master. What her brother and her mother said, let the young woman stay with us a few days, at least ten. After that, she may go. And he said to them, do not hinder me, since the Lord has prospered my way. Send me away, so that I may go to my master. So they said, we will call the young woman and ask her personally. Then they called Rebecca and said to her, will you go with this man? And she said, I will go. So they sent away Rebecca, their sister, and her nurse, and Abraham's servant and his men. And they blessed Rebecca and said to her, our sister, may you become the mother of thousands of ten thousands, and may your descendants possess the gates of those who hate them. Then Rebecca and her maid arose, and they rode on the camels and followed the man. So the servant took Rebecca and departed. Now Isaac came from the way of Beelaharoy, for he dwelt in the south. And Isaac went out to meditate in the field in the evening. And they lifted his eyes and looked, and there the camels were coming. Then Rebecca lifted up her eyes, and when she saw Isaac, she dismounted from her camel, for she had said to the servant, who is this man walking in the For she had said to the servant, who is this man walking in the field to meet us? The servant said, it is my master. So she took a veil and covered herself. And the servant told Isaac all the things he had done. Then Isaac brought her into his mother Sarah's tent, and he took Rebecca, and she became his wife. And he loved her. So Isaac was comforted after his mother's death. The following morning, the servant asked that they should release him and Rebecca to go back to, to Abraham and Isaac. And although the family would like them to stay for at least ten days. Rebecca willingly agreed to go with the servant. Just like Abraham willingly responded to do God's bidding, to leave his country and his people. And to go to a land God would show him. Here was Rebecca, leaving her own people to marry a complete stranger. This would only be a journey of faith. She chose to go where God was leading her. Like Rebecca, we all must learn to go wherever God leads us. I remember the chorus that says, wherever he leads I'll go. Wherever he leads I'll go. I follow my Christ, who loves me so. Wherever he leads, I'll go. That should be our song. In a way, she chose to enter into God's covenant. So the family sent her away with her nurse, but not before they had blessed her. It was customary in the Middle East for the family to give a marriage blessing. An example of this is found in Ruth, chapter four, verses eleven to twelve. Ruth four, eleven to twelve. When the elders at the gate pronounced blessings upon Ruth, after Boaz had taken her as wife. And so in verse sixty, they blessed Rebecca and said to her. Our sister, may you become the mother of thousands of ten thousands. And may your descendants possess the gates of those who hate them. This blessing is echoing God's promise to Abraham concerning Sarah. In Genesis seventeen, fifteen to sixteen. Where it says, as for Sarah, your wife, you shall not call her Sarai. But Sarah shall be her name, and I will bless her, and she shall be a mother of nations. And in Genesis twenty-two seventeen. This God had said to Abraham, among other things. Your descendants shall possess the gates of their enemies. After the blessing, the servant departed with Rebecca and her maids and made their way to Isaac. They found him meditating at Beal-Haroi. This was the place that Hagar had named God, the one who sees me. When she was running away from Sarah. Isaac received his bride, took her into his mother's tent, and he loved her. In this chapter, we see the love of a father for his son. Demonstrated by sending his servant to find a godly wife for him. We see the commitment of a servant to his master, as he faithfully accomplished that mission. But most importantly, we see the servant's dependence on God's direction and guidance. To make critical decisions. How he demonstrated faith in God by seeking him in prayer. What a great example for us all. What important decisions do you need to make? For instance, in the areas of marriage, career, business, relationships, parenting, et cetera. God is ready to lead and direct you, if only you will seek him in prayer. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the way you have instructed us tonight. Especially about how important it is to always commit our ways to you and depend on your direction and guidance. May we never underestimate the importance of prayer in our lives. Help us to realize that our needs are never too insignificant for you to care about, or too big for you to handle. Thank you that you are God who answers prayers. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Next week, we shall be studying Genesis, chapter twenty-five. Good night.